Evening everyone, we call to Hartsville City, the City of Hartsville Public Hearing and Regular City Council meeting Tuesday, August 10th. At this time, Chairman, if any members wish to participate in council, as we stand for the invitation called by the Fudge Allegiance, I would ask. Counselor.
You've achieved the mission.
Counselor Mac. Counselor Mac, you do our invitation called by the Fudge Allegiance.
In that, most holy and blessed God, thou art God, and God almighty. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us to excel, to do the business of our city, Hartsville, that we know so much. Father, you say no word, except you watch the city, those that watch, watching them. Father, we know you watch our city, continue to watch our city, let us be diligent to watch our city, and watch the entire world. Get us through all of these things that we need to get through, that we know you will get us through. Please now, who has my name, Jesus name, pray.
Amen.
The Fudge Allegiance, to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, please proceed. This time, Chairman, entertaining the motion to read and approve the minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one Joint City Council and Hartsville Public Development Corporation meeting in July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one Regular City Council meeting, Mr. Mr. Trump. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by nay. The ayes have. Moving on to item four. We do not have public comments for this evening. We have Mr. Baron, who is here to present the NEOI graduate certificates and honor rolls of the elected officials for your service.
Mr. Mayor of the Council, it's great to be here tonight in Hartsville. Got three awards to present. If you recall, I was supposed to be here a few months ago, and I apologize. I had a family conflict, but you are one of about sixteen of our two hundred and seventy-one councils, what we refer to as our honor roll councils, where each member has graduated from the Municipal Elected Officials Institute. So again, I want to commend you for your continued education. Also, speaking of the Municipal Elected Officials Institute, want to recognize one of your own, Councilman Delaney, for recently graduating from the Municipal Elected Officials Institute. So know that you were recognized recently and built ahead at our annual meeting.
Will that ever see the votes?
Okay, yeah, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. And make the speech.
Well, I think that should. I really want to give a lot of thanks to Sharon for encouraging me to give her the program, take advantage of the online classes. So I give a lot of credit to her for helping me out three times late at night working, and I'm happy that she helped a little computer snap when it made it. So thank you, Sharon, very much. Oh, I gotta wait for that one.
He for she?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Oh, but I have two.
Okay. I'd be used to this.
Thank you, Sharon.
Last but not least, certainly want to bring the award back to Hartsville. Y'all have a long history, don't have to tell you if you're a long history of winning our achievement awards. And this year, you again are the recipient of the Municipal Association's Achievement Award in the population class of five to ten thousand. Y'all are winning it for your Neptune Park, for the youth development program. What an awesome program. I commend you, your staff that are here. It speaks boldly of your council in Hartsville, and hopefully many of our municipalities can emulate this. As you know, keeping your city cool, bringing kids, keeping them staying home, so I commend you for all you do.
I hate that Jordan's not here tonight. Sorry to ask, oh, yeah, do you want to come up and accept that on behalf of your partner in crime?
Sorry, I'm under arrest. Things happen.
Yeah, let's, I mean, let's city, y'all. This is departmental west, so this is certainly.
I'll let Kelly have it.
Okay.
Go for it, Kelly.
He's representing his nephew.
He's got the shirt on.
And my shorts.
And we had the video keyed up, I don't know if y'all want to see the video. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Population category, five thousand and one to ten thousand, the city of Hartsville. The city of Hartsville's Neptune Island Water Park, which welcomes in two hundred thousand guests in its first preseason, employs about two hundred seasonal staff members each year. Clearly, all of these workers are high school or college students, making the park one of the region's largest employers of this age group. The city recognizes unique opportunity to enhance leadership and teamwork skills in the community's young people. The city of Hartsville is not only providing employment, but also professional development. There are not many opportunities that we see that cities aren't providing to really connect with the younger generation. Neptune Island has provided us a way that we didn't realize was going to happen when we decided to build the water park. It came to fruition during our season one. We realized, like, we're having over two hundred seasonal staff that are youth. Most of these children, it is their first job. And what we had to do is we had to develop strategic partnerships with the school districts and go do trainings and conferences. We go to the World Water Park Association to figure out how do you reach out to them. After using a local staffing agency for the water park's first season, the city switched to handling human resources for the park internally. The Neptune Island team then developed new training efforts based on its own experiences and guidance from companies respected for their customer service, such as Disney and Chick-fil-A. The team built strategic partnerships with local school districts to engage with students.
Neptune Island has prepared me for other opportunities, but really just helped me develop my skills as a leader. Neptune Island was my first job, and I started out as a supervisor, became an assistant manager, manager, and then a guest service manager. Through those roles, I've developed so many additional skills that I've been able to take with me into my college experience, into other jobs. I'm actually now with the city of Hartsville as a permanent intern. So landing my first job outside of college really came from the skills that I developed at Neptune Island.
Neptune Island staff members have benefited from the job skills learned at the attraction as they have transitioned into their professional lives, making the park an investment in Hartsville's future workforce.
One of the biggest lasting impacts is, of course, the workforce development for Hartsville and creating a workforce that hopefully will get new businesses to invest in our community. But we hope that these new employees will take these opportunities for growth and use them in their professional careers in the future and be able to say, well, my first job was at Neptune Island, and having that tied back to the city of Hartsville is a great outcome.
The city of Hartsville will grow the leadership program with professional development activities like interview training, professional communications, and resume building workshops. In twenty twenty-one, Neptune Island will introduce an employee advisory committee to give employees more opportunities to improve the guest experience at the park.
Again, folks, congratulations. I mean, well deserved. Thank you. Okay, monthly departmental update? Sylvester Moss?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Yes, ma'am.
First off, I just want to introduce HR staff, basically, Deary and Kelly Woodham. That's a part of our three team, three department, three-person department. And basically, I just want to give you a brief overview of what we do in human resources. So what do we have to offer? Okay? So basically, first off, you want to know what human resource means. It's basically, we have a life support system that keeps the heart, our staff, and organs, the departments running, and people for us. So that's what we do, that's what we pride ourselves on. And basically, how we do that is we have to have a employee life cycle. So our employee life cycle starts from the attraction phase, where we have to go out and attract and recruit employees that can work for us. And the next phase is once we get those approved, and recruit, and then we get them started with orientation and training. And as we move forward in this life cycle, it goes to the development stage. So once they're onboard, onboard, we go through the process of developing, as we've seen in the video, on our water park, developing, training, coaching, feedback, things that train our staff to continue to be premier employees. Okay? And then we do management, management performance, engagement, and motivation, recognition, and the end of that employee life cycle is the farewell. Now, farewell could be in multiple fronts. Most times, you want to do a positive farewell, where they're, they've learned, they've grown, and they're going off into other endeavors. Okay? So when we look at HR, three of the main important things of our life cycle is the development phase, the management phase, and the engagement phase. And why is that important? Because those phases are more, and very importantly, we want to retain quality employees. And we want to have quality employees to make sure our day-to-day needs are met and our customers are satisfied. So that's why we pride ourselves on making sure we go through all these phases of life cycle. Okay? What do we have to offer? So the human res- human resources supports a slew of things that we're offering. Just going to highlight some of the main things that we do on, you know, annual basis, monthly basis, and just, and also semi-annually. But some of those things are, we provide longevity awards to our staff for their years of services. So for every five years you serve, we honor you with a monetary gift, some type of plaque, or something to just commemorate you taking time in the years of service provided to us. Okay? One of the other things that we do is we provide performance appraisal. So we assist departments on making sure that the staff that we have are meeting performance objectives, doing what they can do to continue to be premier employees, so that we continue to be premier employer. And how we do that is we continue to develop and engage staff through, again, coaching and feedback. Also, we provide things such as birthday incentives, we provide subway meal cards each year to our staff for those who have birthdays each year. We provide tokens of appreciation each year from the city through Christmas bonus initiatives. And we also advocate recognition of stellar staff, and we nominate employees of the year. And this employees of the year, there, once they're named, this employee gets kudos, special parking of their choosing. At this time, Brandon Brown is our employee of the year this year, and he chose the park right up front. So depending on, so depending on where you're working, whether you're fire, you're police, you pick that designated park and ensure park for one full year. And you also get a monetary gift as well. So other areas that we support, provide support. So for our staff, we understand that mental health is very important. So we do offer what we consider employee assistance through our partner vendors, so those for employees and their family members. So if there's issues that people are going through at home or on the job, we do have resources available to support those staff. And our wellness programs that we also provide, we just initiated the Heart Walk Initiative, where we have authorized all staff to take at least fifteen minutes a day and just get out and do some type of walking exercise, whether it's around the complex, or the facility, or wherever you are, just take time out and go walking. Okay? And basically, there's some other things that we do, such as weight loss programs, promote healthy lifestyle, through walking, eating healthy, and ultimately, supporting losing weight. We have other medical programs, such as a medical health, telehealth program. So, so if you want to be diagnosed with certain things, such as a cold, flu, sinus infections, or fever, or other minor illnesses, you can just make a phone call as opposed to setting up an appointment through your local doctor or taking out work, you can just pick up the phone and use our resource. Also, we have gym reimbursement. So if you're joining a gym, a local gym that we partner with, after so many visits, we actually turn around and reimburse you for those memberships, the membership fees. We also provide a flu shot clinic, which is usually in October, where we provide free flu shots to our staff for those who are interested. We also provide an annual free preventative health screening. So this is something that you have, for those who have the health coverage through Piva, we get such a four hundred dollar service that we set up, and each employee or their spouse of their cover can come and have that blood work done. And typically, they're looking at your lipid blood panel, which is your glucose, your body mass index, those things. Those things are available free of charge that we provide to our staff. Special events that we work through with the city of Hartsville and our staff is employee lunches. We also provide passes to the water park. We have employee sports through Parks and Rec. We do touch a truck event, which we have that in September, where we allow staff to come out and see all of our equipment at one location, where we can put our hands on and say, this is what this does, or vice versa, with fire, police, or public services. That's usually what we try to do annually, and we hope to push that out maybe to the public. Our staff are our greatest assets, so we continue to pride ourselves on doing what we do to provide those services to our staff, whether it be employee appreciation, or employee of the month, or longevity awards, or bays. That's what we do for our staff. Also, again, there's things that we do throughout the year as well, as far as administrative professional days, where we take staff and take them to lunch, or we take them somewhere special. So in closing, I just wanted to kind of give some hiring updates. Since last year, July, we've hired over two hundred nine employees in these categories, whether it be firefighter, volunteer, police, interns, as we've witnessed on the screen, in the finance department, water park, and public services. So on average, we're constantly doing things to continue to bring people to our city and bring people to our workforce, so that we can be premier employer. So it is true when they say you can't spell hero without HR.
Okay, Sylvester, thank you. Very good. Mr. Manager?
Sure. I just have a few items for you today. First of all, election filing, the Daniel Servino won this Friday the thirteenth at noon, so you know. National Night Out, of course, is this weekend on Saturday at Burry Park. Come join our police and fire and come celebrate National Night Out. Now, we're trying to do, kind of revamp the program a little bit, make it a little more interactive, get the cops out from behind the, with that, with that interactive community. So that's from six thirty to eight thirty at Burry Park on Saturday nights, please come on up. And lastly, just for an update, you do have before you a letter that was from one of our citizens about skateboarding. So we did meet with the Parks Committee about, and spoke with it, and we gave, he gave a presentation along with some staff members, and then also they spoke about. But we're asking them to take a look at it one more time, actually see if they want to give a recommendation to council. Again, you guys can read the letter, let you know what you think. But at this point, we're going to wait for Parks Committee to do, kind of go through their process first, and if they come back with anything, we'll take it to you guys and see what you guys want to do and change this to. Any questions about that? So that's all I have for the mayor of it.
Okay. Moving into, or, sorry, items for the consent agenda to be received without objection, just in proof. Well, moving into unfinished business, item six on our agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four nineteen, the mayor will publish.
Yes, sir. Public hearing and final reading ordinance forty-four nineteen is an ordinance of the city of Hartsville to authorize a lease purchase finance in the amount of not exceeding three hundred fifty thousand dollars and other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of ordinance forty-four nineteen. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance forty-four nineteen, if you'd rise, come to the front, state your name and address for the record, please leave your comments in two minutes or less. Hearing that there are none, chairman, we close the public hearing and entertain the motion to adopt final reading of ordinance forty-four nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we adopt final reading of ordinance forty-four nineteen.
Okay, there's a motion, then there's a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have. Item, ordinance forty-four nineteen is passed. Item seven on the agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four twenty, the mayor will publish.
Yes, sir. It's to lease a portion of tax note number zero five six, zero six zero two zero eight seven, located at one one four South Port Street to Brandy Stellworth DVA Station.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title and presentation of ordinance forty-four twenty. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing on ordinance forty-four twenty. If you'd like to be heard on the ordinance, if you'll rise, state your name and address for the record, come to the front, please leave your comments in two minutes or less. And hearing that there are none, the chairman, we close the public hearing and entertain the motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion.
There's a motion.
Seconds.
There's seconds. There any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by nay. The ayes have. Moving into new business, item eight on the agenda is resolution oh eight twenty-one dash oh one, the mayor will publish the resolution.
Yes, sir. It's requesting and recommending the sale of ten acres plus or minus of property known as Canal Street, owned by the Hartsville Public Development Corporation, other matters related thereto.
Okay, you've heard the reading of resolution oh eight twenty-one dash oh one, is there a motion to, actually, this is on. So I've signed the recusal because of my position on the Hartsville Development Corporation being elected official, there cannot be a conflict interest. So I'll turn the gavel over. Okay, is there, is there a motion on resolution oh eight twenty-one oh one?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to resolution oh eight twenty-one oh one.
We need a motion before we can have a movement, Mr. McGee. Is there a motion on, excuse me, resolution oh eight twenty-one oh one?
Second.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion on second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd now like to make a motion. I'd like to amend a resolution of oh eight twenty-one oh one in the following manner. I'd like to strike the language, the last sentence that says, it starts with or alternatively in accordance with a certain alternate alternative proposals presented by an engine bidder. Strike that and add the following language. If, after receiving proposals from qualified developers for the sale and development of Canal District in accordance with the design documents propagated by HPDC's design professionals and consultants, council deems none as acceptable, then alternative proposals will be solicited.
Okay, that's Mr. McGee's amendment. Is there a second? I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, just say, amended or proposed amendment, and we select it, is there any discussion?
I got a question. I have a question here. When you say, when you read the alternative proposal will be solicited, is that alternative proposal different from the original proposal that the bids went out on?
Yes, sir. In a sense, what I was asking is that the first bid prior to the project, the first bid proposal to do, I, first time we do an R F Q, that we ask people to place bids on what we have been working on for three and a half years, that we rely, we hired professionals, we have relied on professionals to give us their best input as to what Canal could look like. And rather than cloud the issue with having bids on that and possible bids on an alternative proposal at the same time, all I did was change the language. It extends the timeline, but not the intent of what the motion is as presented to us tonight. But it says, we'll bid out the project that recall Canal that Tom Lo and others have put together for us, see what happens there. Council has full rights of playing this morning, we can say yes or no to anything. But if it comes back and we don't like anything that we get in that first wave, then we can put it out again and leave it wide open and maybe get completely different things back to them or something that's greater than all of what we're proposing.
Yeah, I'm having some problems trying to understand, maybe because I miss a lot of this, it's sort of coming in late too. Because from my experience, if a bid goes out, it's pretty much already set up how you want it to be done. And I don't think it's fair to the first round of jitters that you don't like their numbers or whatever, and you decide to, the council can kill it and then change it. Now, do they have the right to come back and re-bid? That's what I'm having issue with.
Yes, because I understand, and if I'm correct, if I'm wrong on this, that they have the right to change what we put out there within certain parameters. Because we have, we have a code, codes that will be developed. We have guidelines for bricks and different things in there, and someone may say, I want to use a different color brick, I want to do that. I mean, they can amend things that way. It's just highly unlikely that a bid will go out and come back to hundred percent the way that it's been drawn up. And that's not too likely to happen.
Hey, any other thing you can just clarify?
Oh, yeah. You asked me to clarify.
Is there anything that needs to be clarified as far as?
Yeah, so I would recommend you can't ask for a second bid within this, this bid. You'd have to send out a whole new R F Q, as opposed, you can't make the motion to, so that, that last part would need to be struck from it and not to request, say, the council has the right to put it back out for bid. You get the bids in, you accept what you accept. If you don't like it, then you can mix the whole thing and then put it out for alternative bid.
Well, and thank you, that was my intent, I knew we would have to do another R F Q. I was just trying, I live out, took the language and just exploded it into a different timeline.
Yeah, so, yes, exactly, you would have, you can't, you have to put it out and then, again, I guess the, what the language in the R F Q would say would that it would go out for a bid with the current proposal, which is the work that's done by Tom Lo, done by, we're working with staff and things like that. Again, the alternative bid is a optional thing that would have been added on to it, allowing that flexibility for a developer to come in and say that we'd like to look at changing this brick color, changing those things. If you don't do that, then they have to come in and have to bid on what you have presented to them. If they don't, then they can be considered an unqualified bidder according to us. So that's the purpose of the alternative, not to accept the whole new project per se, but to allow for some flexibility. And that's the purpose of the alternative, not to change the scope of the project, but just to allow some flexibility with this council to make those types of changes should be made.
So the way the unamended resolution reads and then Mr. McGee's amendment, the unamended resolution asks for R F Qs on the project as we have it now, and then those people would also have an option to present an alternate plan. Not entirely a whole new deal, but a slight change or so.
Well, too, there approach him, I think it, I think it opens the door. When you say alternative proposal, it could be somebody who just tweaks what we've got out there too, or it could be somebody that comes in and has a totally different vision for that, which could put council in a position of having to look at one bid that gets submitted that is basically what we've been working on for years, and someone else comes in with a totally different thing. It could happen.
And I understand that, and my understanding of the meeting we had with HPDC, the joint meeting, walked out of there, my understanding was that we were proposing, and I had effective minutes, we were proposing having an alternate proposal. And I don't, you know, to me, it seems that you've got the ideal, and then you've got these developers who do this all the time. They may have a slightly different take on it, and they save us money or do it a different way or whatever. It's up to Hartsville Development, Public Development Corporation and council to go through all that, and we're not obligated to accept any of that, is my understanding, you know.
Now, I can agree with that, if by the time the council see, we should see the final bid, HPDC should actually go through that process. Because I'm still in the frame of, hey, you put out a bid for a job. They, agencies come to putting their quotes, and we can accept any one of them. Or the way the contractor, the bid's written up, that you got in there, they can change certain things, include that in their quote, and if you looked at it. certain things, include that in their quote, and if you looked at it again, you know? For me, as a pastor person sitting here, I just got, I just got to be fair to all the bids. I just can't, this guy look good, he can come back and change it later.
And a concern I have, if we have to, if it does come down to having to put it out twice, is there a message that that sends? You know, nobody, the first time, you know, came up with something that was acceptable that we put out for alternative, you know? And just me thinking, why not do it all at the same time? You cut down a little bit of time in that process, and I don't know what the process would take, I don't know if it's two months, or three months, or whatever, if you cut down a little bit of time in that, and I used to tell my kids in school, you know, you may be the smartest person in the room, but you're not smarter than the whole room. So, lots of ideas coming in, and it's up to this body and also Hartsville Public Development Corporation to sort through those things. And, you know, we're not obligated to take anything, or carry anything down, and that's my understanding of it.
There were several points of discussion this morning, you can go back to what you said while I go back when we left that last meeting, there was discussions, one, Pat Youngblood was on the phone.
Right.
He was one of those that said, oh, let's have some alternatives. And then, but this morning, after a long discussion, he said, I see where you're coming from, and I would yield to having it done, or to timeline, we've been working on this for three and a half, four years, a month or two difference in that, if that's what it meant, you know, sending out two proposals, like you said, I don't think this is an issue or a concern. Which was also pointed out this morning, if we didn't have a million and a half dollars in debt to be paid, you know, sometime coming in the future, we're saying, we wouldn't rush it like this, we'd take our time.
Just doesn't like an airline, the budget.
No, they don't, yeah.
Okay, other comments? Callaway, you're, you're on the board? Inside?
Regardless of how it goes, council owns the power, correct? Regardless, left and right, whether we do or do not, the end will be all by the council, correct?
And Mr. Moore made, addressed this, my understanding is that the development corporation owns the property, and it's their right to sell the property or dispose of the property on that. Now, maybe Mr. Moore can speak to council's responsibility with the whole process of that.
Yeah, so, the HPDC again is a financial arm that's created to hold the debt of the property and assets, they hold title to all of the properties in the Canal District. Now, Canal is a, it is a city project per se, but it is owned by HPDC, and you guys have delegated to HPDC to develop and to manage the sale of, not sale, the development of this Canal District. Council authority essentially is by appointing three members to that board, two from the vice, from the finance committee, and then one at large, essentially. And so, your responsibility is to manage the